Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation afterwards.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Lord, we come before you tonight and as always, we ask for your grace, your forgiveness, your love. We know that you love us perfectly, even though we're an imperfect people. I guess never before tonight, actually, the words indivisible hit me so hard saying those two pledges, but we know that in your eyes, we are an indivisible people because we are all children of you. And so, we just hope that tonight, as we make our way through this agenda and as we all gather together to try to make Shenandoah a better place to live and play and pray and work, that you put your hand of guidance upon us, whether we be residents, city staff, strategic partners, just anybody here that's here tonight, Lord, that is here for the purpose of trying to make Shenandoah a better place, that they just remember the word indivisible. That's something that oftentimes we lose sight of. At the end of the day, we're all here for the same reason because we're all children of you. We pray these things in your son's name and all God people's said.
Amen.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We're going to move into item five then, which is Citizens Forum. We had a couple folks that showed up tonight to speak, which we always love, and we will start off with Ms. Julia Hepburn. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to the agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand at the podium and say their name for the folks on YouTube.
Hi, my name's Julia Hepburn. I live at 28903 Enchanted Drive. I have a couple of things. I noticed in the executive session, you all were going to do Kathy Zivau, and I just know that she was a wonderful secretary for our city, and I know you hired her as a city administrator with no experience in that position, and the city is paying her to learn her job. So, I just feel like everyone needs to be made aware of that. I also have some issues with our police department. I understand there was a home invasion somewhere between the days of June 1st to the 4th. I don't understand how, when our police are supposed to be patrolling our neighborhoods, that no police officer saw that this front door was knocked in. And what's kind of upsets me even more is it's an elderly resident. So, what if by chance she had been at home, by herself, when this happened? Would she have been laying there for three days and nobody knew about it? I also do human trafficking, anti-human trafficking through the Montgomery County Coalition, and I did a rescue last Friday over here in one of our own businesses. And it kind of worries me because I feel like we're looking at the head-to-bed taxes and not what's actually going on in these facilities. I rescued her during the day. At any time anybody wanted to be educated about this, it is running rampant in our city. Every once a month, we make, we have different sections of the town we go into, and right here in Shenandoah alone is my turf, and there are 24 motels that we hit once a month. Out of those 24, eight of them have had human trafficking go through their doors. So, I just really wish that whatever, that we could all work together and realize that our safe little city is not safe, because I can guarantee you, if it happened to your child, you'd be on it.
Thank you, Ms. Hepburn. Okay, we will move to, and I apologize, I don't know if this is a C or a G, so it's either Scott Goldman or Scott Coleman?
Goldman.
Goldman with a G. I was, okay, I was right the first time. This is Scott Goldman, who is running for Chief Justice of the Ninth District Court of Appeals.
Yeah, can I proceed?
Yes, sir.
I don't know where the YouTube video is, but...
Right directly behind you.
Okay. I'm Scott Goldman. I'm running for Chief Justice of the Ninth District Court of Appeals, and I appreciate your vote and your support. So, state your address. I live in Cut and Shoot, Texas, which I understand is not part of Shenandoah. But I'm here today because this court, the Ninth District Court of Appeals, is important to Shenandoah. It's important to Montgomery County. It covers, this court covers 10 counties. Montgomery County being the biggest one, Liberty, Jefferson, Orange, Jasper, Newton, Hardin, Tyler, San Jacinto, and Pope Counties. Why am I running? I've been a trial attorney for 31 years, tried over 300 civil jury trials all across the state of Texas, and I've mainly tried cases in the big metropolitan areas, especially Houston and San Antonio. We do not have any more conservative Republican judges in any of the big municipalities. They're all liberal Democratic judges, and I don't have anything against Democrats. But what I've seen trying these cases is that these judges are not following the law. They're not enforcing the law. They're legislating from the bench, and that's why I'm running for this position. The good news is, is the Ninth District Court of Appeals that sits in Beaumont is the most conservative court of appeals in the state of Texas, and I want to keep it that way. So, what, you know, I'm in a runoff. Early voting starts June 29th through July 10th. The runoff election is Tuesday, July 14th. What makes me more qualified than my opponent, because there's only two of us, the most complex, complicated cases that any justice will hear in the state of Texas are from civil jury trials. Like I said earlier, I've got over 300 civil jury trials. My opponent only has 55, and that can be verified by looking at his answers to the questionnaire for the Republican Voters of Texas PAC. I've got these four justices over there. They're backing me. They want me to win this bench. I want to win this bench, and with the coronavirus, we're in a really pickle to campaign. Meetings like this are extremely few and far between. They're not heavily attended, so we don't have a way to get out and talk to people. So, it's a matter of mailers, phone calls, social media, and asking all of y'all to get on your email contacts, your Facebook, your next-door neighbor link, Twitter, whatever it is, and spread the word, and that's what we're asking you to do.
To campaign.
I'd ask for your support for Chief Justice and Ninth District Court of Appeals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Vince Santini.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city of Shenandoah, citizens. Thanks for being here. It's an honor. My name is Vince Santini, and I too am running for a judgeship, a bench. It's not the Ninth Court of Appeals. It's the new district court for Montgomery County. It covers the township, the cities, and all the different districts for Montgomery County. And I like what you said, Mr. Mayor, about indivisible, and I think it's real important right now. It reminds me of First Corinthians, Chapter 12, verse 12 specifically. Although we're many members, made up of many parts, we are all one body. And so, I think that's real important right now. Right now, the world, Montgomery County, we're looking for leadership. We're looking for people. We're looking for law and order, people that are going to serve. And that's what y'all do. That's what I want to do. I want to serve our community, and that's why I'm running. That's why I was asked to run. And so, I really think this position, and citizens, this is what I believe, I think that we are all in agreement that a judgeship, a district court in Texas, in Montgomery County, that should be dignified, right? We shouldn't be making the news. We shouldn't be making headlines. You shouldn't be reading scandals about judges. Judges of the three branches of government, the judgeship should be the least, the one you never hear about, right? Because when you do, that means something is not right. Laws aren't being followed, and that comes down to faith. We want the citizens of Montgomery County to have faith that when they go into the 457th District Court, they're going to be treated fairly. Their cases are going to be heard properly with a strict and faithful adherence to the laws and the Constitution. And that's why I'm running, and I would love everyone's support. Voting, we have a special, it's a runoff, July 14th. Early voting begins June 29th through July 10th, and we're very grateful and we're humbled to be here, running, seeking this nomination. I'm Vince Santini for the 457th District Court. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, Mr. Santini. All right, kind of late entry, but we're sure glad he showed up, Mr. Mark Hindon.
Mayor, councilman, and all the esteemed guests and residents, I appreciate letting me speak this evening. I had a couple of things that I wanted to hit on the agenda that we had. Number one, the Halloween Safe Streets that'll finally be coming by on my street, and hopefully that it does not rain again this year.
Pull that mic down, just a little, Mark. Pull your mic down still.
Sorry. That made for a very uncomfortable evening. Also, I wanted to inquire about what we can do for the mosquito issue that has been coming up with rain and everything and all the standing water. If we can do something with one of the commissioners to maybe get on a route or something, at least get that in front of them from that standpoint, that'd be very nice. I would like to hear about something along those lines. Also, I wanted to go through and to tell y'all how much a lot of the citizens have come to me and said, you know, we appreciate everything that you do. We don't have a whole lot of time. We get tired of Facebook, but thanks for keeping us informed. And with all the craziness that has been going on, not only on Facebook, but some other media, they've asked me to kind of, what's going on? And I said, it's just a few people that are causing a little bit of an issue, but it's nothing that our city can't handle, and y'all have been doing a wonderful job, our police department and everything. You know, you take an individual that's been with us for 23 years and hasn't been an issue up until now, you kind of got a question, you know, all right, what's going on with that? So, after I explained that to several of my neighbors and friends, it's been a whole lot more palpable for them. So, I just wanted to let y'all know that you do have a whole lot of the support of the city, and I do appreciate the job that each and every one of y'all do, selflessly up there, spending your time. So, I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate it. Okay, well, that will move us to the next item, and obviously, as y'all know, if you didn't get a chance to speak and you want to, we do have a second Citizens Forum that you can sign up for and get to be heard. I'll say that, yeah, we do, okay. Item 10. It was on the previous, the header was on the previous page. I missed. I was like, did we miss our second Citizens Forum? Okay, so with that, we will move to item six, which is Council Inquiry, and I would actually like to bring something up tonight that I'm super, super excited about, so I can't wait much longer to talk about it, and that is the fact that we will be having a Fourth of July celebration. So, on Fourth of July, we will be having a Fourth of July celebration here in the city, and I cannot even come close to thanking the Civic Club, including Ms. Debbie and our two council members, Councilman Broad and Councilman Fletcher, who serve on that committee. I cannot come close to thanking them enough for figuring out a way to put this together. Man, we need it, right? I mean, we need it. It's time. It's time to come back together as a community. It's time to come back together and celebrate one of the most meaningful holidays that we have. As a group of people, we get to celebrate our country, and I can't think of anything more important right now than being able to do that. So, I am just excited about it. I couldn't wait much longer. I was busting at the seams. This is, as y'all know, something that's always been important to me, and I was sure happy to find out that somehow or another, our city administrator, Ms. Debbie, and the Civic Club figured out a way to put it together. So, thank y'all very much for pushing forward and doing that, and I sure hope we have a good turnout. I hope everybody comes. I know it's on a Saturday, and I know it's Fourth of July, but you're probably not going on vacation, and there's not a whole lot of other stuff going on. We'll have it early enough in the day where it won't be super hot, and it'll be a lot of fun, and the kids will love it. So, make sure you come to that. That's all I've got for this particular Council Inquiry. Does anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
I just have one thing that mosquitoes brought to mind, that we are moving some fill from a drainage project into Holly Hill Park, and that's going to fill in some of the low spots to help with mosquitoes as well.
Yes, that is correct. Good point, Councilman Raymaker. So, all right. So, with that, we'll move into another little piece of good news, item seven, which is the presentation of our scholarship awards to our scholarship recipients.
Mayor and Council, Casey Beavers is here. She has been in charge of the scholarship program this year, and she's going to present the certificates to the recipients.
Thank you guys so much for having us here tonight, and I'm just going to turn around here and just say that it's my privilege and honor to be with you all tonight to present the 2020 Resident Scholarship. We have nearly a dozen outstanding advocates. I'm pleased to interview two of the recipients that we are honoring this evening. But before doing so, I just wanted to note that this scholarship would not be possible without the donations made by the members of our Shenandoah Committee, and thanks especially this year to Memorial Curtain Hospital, who made a substantial donation to the fund this year. So, our first recipient is Mont Maitre, and he's going to be attending the University of Texas planning to study biology. He graduated from college. And then, second, our second recipient is Abby Lee, and she graduated from Oak Ridge High School, and she will be attending Louisiana Tech University planning to study business administration.
Well, congratulations to both of you two. That's exciting, and we hope that you go off into the world and become educated, and then you come back to Shenandoah and help make us an even better city. So, congratulations again. That's great. And thank you, Casey, for all y'all's hard work. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move into item eight, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Halloween Safe Streets and National Night Out.
Counsel, you'll see in your agenda pack that the police department is planning out two years ahead this time, and that's to give everybody plenty of advance notice. As it says on your agenda report, people can take advantage of the end of the, you know, after-holiday sales and get some decorations and things like that. You'll see a map that shows the streets. If you have any, also, we're setting the date for National Night Out at the same time. Counsel does need to accept the Halloween Safe Streets since those streets will be closed during the event, and if you have any questions, Troy can address those.
So, both of these sets of streets have had Halloween Safe Streets fairly recently, right?
I believe it's been about four or five years.
Okay. Where they've gone. I was just curious, if there were other selections of streets?
There have been. The logistics of this one was simple because of the utilization of the parking lots. We're able to use the parking lots of the pools.
It's something we've run into in the past. As this event grows and more people come from the city and from the outside, is we have a parking issue, and we've had streets that have been blocked, unfortunately, because of that. So, we're trying to work through those logistics, as Troy said.
I think that was the incident. Since last year, we had a lot of issues with traffic and parking and people being able to safely move into the area of our station.
Right.
Last year, we ended up tying up a lot of our resources in traffic control versus safety of kids, and that's what we want to do. We want to get the officers to where they can protect the kids and the family as they're walking around versus so much traffic control, so.
So, I got a question maybe for the attorney. Legally, if we shut a street down, we shut a street down from traffic? We can do that for short periods of time like this?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's, that's one of the things I noticed last year seemed to be particularly bad about lots of traffic. Kind of, we had a street full of kids, and we'd have one vehicle after another still coming in. And I don't know if we want to get a little more, and this is kind of a discussion, a little more strict of, guys, it's 7 o'clock. We're right in the peak of the safe streets with, you know, 300 kids in the streets. Do we just say, there's a parking lot and, you know?
So, if we're going to have discussion, I'll move to...
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the safe streets for...
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Councilman Fletcher. I have a second by Councilman Broad. We're going to have some more discussion.
Yeah, I was just following up on that. It's a point of concern, and it's kind of been growing, but last year was particularly noticeable, at least, you know, from my perspective. You know, I didn't sit there with a counter, but it felt like there was a lot of traffic, and it could be those streets. And I know because that street's right off of Savannah, you know, it was a different street, but can we just say?
That was, part of the issue was the lack of parking that we had.
Right.
That was a huge issue, and that's the reason why we picked the places we did this time, is the utilization of the pool parking. That creates less of a logistical issue for us. So...
But from a notification perspective, do we want to say, no, the streets are closed?
And not let people come home?
And not let people, and that's, I'm throwing that out there. That's, again, if last year seemed to be, I mean, every year, there's, you know, there's the occasional truck or car that comes through. It was just...
Well, typically, they come through with a police escort. I know last year, again, a lot of our personnel were tied up with other matters and directing traffic because there wasn't any place to park, and then it became a safety issue because we had parking on both sides of the street, and you had two cars trying to come in the same direction, and so, a lot of our personnel were tied up there. So, in the years past, we haven't had as much of an issue that was noticeable this year, because we did, we do get the police escorts that come with that vehicle or whoever is coming in, whether it's a truck or a car or motorcycle or whatever.
And I don't think we have to make a decision tonight. I just, I bring that up because we should think strongly about how to handle those vehicles.
Right. Well, so, the through traffic is only for residents who are going to their house. They're not for just people cutting through. Those people are kept out. So, the only people that are allowed to go through the barriers are those who actually live there, and then they're supposed to be escorted to their house. So, and that's another reason why the advance notification and trying to get this out as early as we can, so that a way the residents have enough time to prepare and understand that it's coming, so they won't be caught off guard and they can plan a little bit better.
And in both of these cases, we have not just the pool parking, but we have the church, we have the school, and we also have right on ground in itself, which is obviously a much larger, wider street than other streets are obviously throughout our city.
And maybe that's just a conversation that you have with those people when they're pulling up, is, hey, we've got safe streets going on. Would you mind parking and walking to your house and come back later? You know, maybe that's that, I'd be willing to bet there's a number of people that would, oh, yeah, okay, I get it, you know, and they probably wouldn't balk a whole bunch. Y'all know me. I'm always going to play devil's advocate, right? When I hear it's hard, then my first thought process is, we shouldn't do or not do something because it's hard. If it's hard, then we just have to try harder. And I, not because I live in a neighborhood on Grogan's Mill, but it does make me more keenly aware, and I'm not saying I want two years from now for safe streets to be in my neighborhood, but what I don't want to say also is that anybody who lives on Grogan's Mill will never get to have safe streets because, sorry, it's just too hard to do it in your neighborhood. I just don't think that it's too hard is the right, is a fair approach. I think, I think we need to keep efforting a way to come up with some sort of solution that says, we can do this everywhere in the city, regardless of where it is. Listen, we're going to have, at some point, we're going to have a full neighborhood over here on the other, on the east side of I-45, and while I get it, that would be really hard, and it'd be really different. I don't want to say we're never going to have Halloween Safe Streets in your neighborhood because it's too hard. So, I just, I'm not asking for a solution tonight. I'm just throwing that out there, that I just think that's a conversation we need to continue to have and something we need to continue to effort, because as always, I'm always going to say, we need to try to look at all areas of the city and all corners of the city and try to bring whatever we can to each of those areas and be as fair as possible. So, I think it's great that you're doing, that you're planning out two years ahead of time, though, by the way. I love that. I love the fact that we know not just this year, but next year where it's going to be. I think that's awesome.
I would agree with your statement, Mr. Mayor, on, you know, if it's hard, we need to step up and tackle it. But at the same time, I'm going to say that if you have a gate in your neighborhood, there's already a barrier of entry.
Sure there is. Absolutely.
And most have a gate for a reason, and it's not to have safe streets in their neighborhood.
But we don't know that until we ask them. They may be wanting to open the gates and have everybody come through.
Then we have to deal with private road issues within the city.
Yep.
And is it in the city or is it not the city? I mean, they're here in the city, obviously, but it becomes a whole private issue.
I don't disagree. Those are all questions, good questions that have to be vetted.
But I'm all for if a neighborhood wants to open their gates and say, hey, come on in, then just be careful what you ask for.
Can I ask?
I don't think you might as well be careful.
Do we have any data on how much, how many people are actually attending this event? Because I know the logistics of the parking, of course, that's always going to be a big, huge piece of this.
No, it has grown so much throughout the years. You know, y'all know, I've been here a long time, and this has grown, and just the last few years, it has grown exponentially. So, there's no telling. And last year, unfortunately, I was focused on the traffic, so I was not able to get in the interior of it and actually see the people, so.
Well, what did we, I think, 8,000 pieces of candy last year? Is that what, something crazy like that? I mean, so that gives you kind of a little bit of an indicator how many people came through.
We don't have somebody standing there with a clicker, but, you know, I mean...
It's big.
It's getting bigger and bigger, and I think the parking issue is always going to have to be paramount when we're talking about holding an event like this, particularly with the kind of growth that we're seeing.
These patterns are really the only two that are going to offer parking, and this is part of the reason I wanted to have this discussion, was we have seen these fairly recently. I mean, since I've been here, the Silverwood, and then I know the other one because my mother-in-law was very excited because she'd moved in, was still under construction when we had it, and of course, we had the nice little rain the whole time. But, yeah, if parking's going to be an issue, and it's not an if, it's, it is, we're going to have to think about, I mean, are we going to get to the point that we basically just sit there and go back?
Show the people in or something.
Go back and forth between these two areas, or perhaps we reach over to, I mean, as much as I enjoyed having it on my street, last year, from an access perspective, you know, we saw some of the logistics issues that that had, but there's another circle that we've got.
There is. There's a few more locations that we can utilize, but I was going to save those for the next two.
Well, the other thing we could do is limit parking to just one side of the street as well.
We could do, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's a simple solution, but I'm sure our guys in blue are more than capable of coming up with the solutions rather than us trying.
Armchair quarterbacks.
So, those are the concerns, I think. That's another great idea.
I was hoping that we'd be able to close off Wellman Road so that the estate side could also be included in the Halloween Safe Streets, because the map, it's sandwiched the park. So, it's like, okay, the park in Silverwood Ranch Estates, I just left. So, if we closed off Wellman, we could maybe make it safer for the kids that are parking in the parking lot, and they could still come in. I could use my Halloween decorations for them.
You know, maybe we'll make, we can let you move to the park and set up a little stand in the park.
Right. There's an idea. Nah. You can drive one to golf cart.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Fletcher. We have a second by Councilman Broad. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 for Halloween Safe Streets, and I think we're all excited because that's another fun event. Another great one for the residents, mostly the kids.
It's well as National Night Out.
What's that?
As well as National, as well as National Night Out. As well as National, as well as National Night Out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Well, that one's not closing streets.
That was not closing streets.
It's just the park.
Which is more for your information.
Item nine, discussion and possible action to amend the permit fee schedule.
Counsel, this is, should reflect the input from counsel at the last meeting. And also, Councilmember McLeod added an alternate option as well. Jackie is here to discuss this with you if needed. We hope that this reflects your input. I know there's a lot of discussion, so.
Mary, I knew that we would approve the new fees, residential fee schedule as, as presented and written.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion?
So again, as I mentioned in the, the discussion in last time, it was about primarily watching out for our contractors who might want to move around regulations. And so the idea of that little was just to say, look, if it's, if it's a brand-new house and suddenly you're adding a whole much more square footage, then you need to go ahead and pay the permit fees and all that. And that was really the, the purpose of adding that.
And, and I get that. And, and I, I think, once a certificate of occupancy is, is issued, then most builders aren't gonna go through that process and then try to come in with something different. And if you look at the areas that we have left to build in our city, they're all zero lot lines. So where are they gonna get?
Oh, yeah.
Are they? I mean, don't we, don't we have an ordinance now of height?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So they can't go, they're not going anywhere. I, I would hate to put this in and, you know, the, the whole point, and, and I, I get exactly what you're trying to say. We don't want somebody to come in and finagle something and try to, you know, come in the back door to save $400 or a thousand or whatever.
And we've added that question, so that's good.
That would necessarily be the case. But at the same time, look, any fee that we impose, I don't care what name you put on it, it's a tax. It, it doesn't matter what you put on it.
Right. My, my point here is, I want to be, I want to be honest upfront.
Absolutely. Well, and that's all we have. And that's all we can stand on is, is the dignity of people when they come in, that they are who they are. And if they're not, then, you know.
If they're willing to cheat, they'll find a way.
They're gonna find a way, you know. I, I would hate to put something into effect that would put a tax on a resident that is truly trying to improve their property.
Yeah, no, I, and I don't, we're all in the same boat on that one. I, I think we're all there. And I'm okay with that. We did clarify the language to find, we defined in addition, which was, that was most necessary. And I think we really cleaned it up a lot.
Correct. It's defined.
I'm, I'm okay with it the way it is. Again, I put that out there for discussion points to say, you know.
And it's a good, it's a very valid point. But again, I think.
And if people go crazy abusing it, we can come back and.
We will.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, they, they still have to go through the process. And, I mean, in that process, you're gonna be able to vet a lot of that out. I mean.
They will. We're gonna stick to our, the zoning requirements for the lots that are gonna require a minimum, a minimum home size on those lots. And so there's not much wiggle room when it comes to, on the builder's side, being able to, to kind of put a, a blank space to come back and build on the end. I'm not saying it's not possible, but if we see that situation, we can bring it to light and bring it back to council to try to address.
I think we have one lot, maybe two in the city. One that I know for sure that's right on Paulerville and Shenandoah, where they're, it's a double lot, and they got a three-car garage on one lot. I can guarantee that if that, those two lots get split, that one lot that's bought with a three-car garage is not gonna be a three-car garage.
There'll be a house.
Can guarantee it. So, I mean, that would probably be the one that slides through this whole process. But you know what?
It's still gonna be permitted.
That'll be an awesome thing because that three-car garage's been there forever.
Your major point is to get, get people talking to the city. You wanna do something, talk to the city. You need to move a gas line, talk to the city. I don't want to charge you money for it, but I want you to talk to the city because I want Danny and our other inspectors and go find out. It's gotta be safe. It's gotta be done right. It's gotta be the code for you, your family, your neighbors, and the future people who are gonna live here. And that's, you know.
And the earlier you start that process, the better it is for you.
Exactly.
And I appreciate the wording in there. I don't, I don't know who put it in, but whoever added the wording in that said, you know, no permit fee does not mean that you are not required to have a permit.
Yeah, exactly.
You are required to have a permit. The city is just granting you the opportunity to build what you want to build without charging you a fee. That's a perk of being a resident in the city of Shenandoah.
So along that line, why do we differentiate on pools, then?
The size of the pool.
Size of the pool.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I sort of struggle with that a little bit, too. Why does it matter?
It's like, if we're not doing fees for all this and it's helping to improve it, then let's not split hairs on the pool, the pool permit. You're gonna get a permit because you've got electrical and plumbing and everything else that goes with it. But why, why differentiate it?
You've got concrete excavation, you've got, I mean, I guess it depends on how you define a pool. Because a hundred thousand dollar plus pool is probably just not the pool by itself, but it's also.
It's probably a lot of travertine decking.
There's a lot of other structures, I'm sure, that are.
So that's a really good question. When somebody submits a permit for that, let's say they're doing a whole sort of backyard renovation, is all that falling underneath pool? Or is it just strictly what holds water?
Typically, we would pull out, like, an outdoor kitchen or outdoor living space separate as well. So you would have the outdoor living space and then the pool. I mean, there are some times where there's maybe a small water feature or small accessory used to that pool that may be lumped in there. But.
Do we have many residential pools that are more than a hundred thousand dollars for just the pool?
Right. There, I think those are few.
I don't know, mine's 10 years old now, and it was $60,000.
They're not cheap, I can tell you that.
They're not cheap.
Right.
But I'm talking about, you know, just, if, I mean, the, the point raised, if you're pulling outdoor kitchens out and you're pulling gas lines out and you're electric, you know, if you're talking about just the thing that holds water.
Well, that's what a pool is.
I'm just telling you, they're not cheap. I just put one in last year, and they ain't cheap.
Depends if you have a cavern and how big your jacuzzi is, and if you have a walk-in beach feature and.
We got a metal feed trough.
All kinds of stuff can, can add up.
Again, we're, again, we split hairs on that stuff. So the idea is to have a pool, right? And how you design your pool is up to you, but.
And again, I want, I want the city and our inspectors to take a look.
Absolutely, absolutely. None of this, none of this precludes.
Right.
Inspection or eliminates them.
I'm just saying, why, why.
Or eliminates.
But Ron, Ron's raising the fairly valid point.
I, I would be happy to amend the, the motion and.
If we could.
Bill's got some.
No, you can do that and just eliminate any fee for swimming pools over a hundred thousand.
Let me go back and, and redo the motion. Any other discussion before I make that change?
Make sure it's all at once?
So the intent is to completely remove the, the caveat of residential pool?
The intent is to eliminate any permit fees that our residents would have to pay for improving their property.
There you go.
So.
There you go.
How are we gonna budget and pay for the building inspector to inspect all this stuff? There's no fees.
Well, his income is primarily commercial, right, Jackie? I mean, we don't, it, it, we got one, we basically eliminated the two renovations that were last year. And again, how many pools have we been put in that are over a hundred thousand dollars? It wouldn't be a much. We're talking about, you know, maybe a thousand dollars off of the.
I, I don't think it's a hit to our building department to give the benefit to our, our residents by any means, especially with all the, the commercial construction that's going on throughout our city. And, I mean, this doesn't eliminate, you know, high-density residential projects or, none of that falls into play. We're just talking about.
Residents.
One to four residential living, you know, which in our city, it's all one. We go over that, then it's usually, you know, moves to a different type of property, property entity or ownership. So I, I, I hear what you're, you're saying, Charlie, but I don't think there's a hit to our, our.
It's just a, it's just a valid point to think about.
Do you have that information on hand, Jackie? How many pools over a hundred thousand?
Since January of 2019, we've had two.
So that would have generated 500 bucks of revenue each.
It's a thousand bucks.
And that.
And we've had two that have added square footage, and I think they probably.
We've actually, just for transparency, we've had a couple more submit since I ran those numbers. So we have a total of four additions and two pools over a hundred thousand.
Three grand.
Okay, so you were going to amend your motion to?
So I'm gonna amend the motion to be, move that we approve the, the, geez, I'll go back here. Move that we, that we approve the residential fee schedule by making one correction, and that is eliminating any permit fee for homeowner improvement of property. So pools, new additions, remodels, independent trade permits, anything that falls into a residential category, I would move that, that we eliminate those permits.
Is that too broad? Or is that, that, that work?
No, I think that's fine. That will eliminate a fee for pools over a hundred thousand dollars. I think Councilman, Councilman Fletcher correctly stated it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four oh one. Okay, well, with that, we will move into item 10, which is our second citizen forum. And nobody signed up to speak. But y'all know me. Anybody? Going once? Going twice? All right, well, then we will move to item 11, which is our city administrator updates. Kathy?
Counsel, I have a few quick ones for you. First of all, the Vision Park drainage project that's been going on is completed, and we just have a few punch list items left. The water tower, the interior is nearly complete. Staff will soon be able to put it back in service while the remainder of the tower is painted on the outside. The Entergy project on Wellman, that work is in progress. I'm sure y'all have seen the, the vehicles and the workers out there. The underground trunk line is being installed on Wellman, so that's, it's great to see that underway. Troy reported to me that several vitamin shops have been broken into from the surrounding areas. So the police are watching the one that we have in Portofino. So a little bit of extra patrol, some eyes on our businesses. And last but not least, we have a blood drive scheduled here. It's going to be inside council chambers on Thursday, June the 18th. They, it's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And you can register online. There are 44 appointment slots. We have about 17 or so that are already set up to donate. They really do need some blood. So if you're, if you have the time and you're able to, please give it a thought. You can go under our website and get the information on how to register.
Awesome, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, with that, we will move into council inquiry. And I believe this week we're at Mr. McLeod starting first. Councilman Pop?
Having a thing this week.
Oh, okay.
I just, well, actually, I do.
Ah.
Couldn't let it go. I do want to point out, and I thought Rich may do, had done this earlier, that the disaster declaration is expiring today. And as far as Shenandoah is concerned, we're gonna be back in business. So that's it.
Good. Mayor Portell?
Thank you.
Councilman Gristi?
I just wanted to say, the Collar Park lights look great. That's a, a nice addition. Well, when, as we drive by there, it's kind of nice to see that not being dark. So it's, it's, you know, I've seen people out there walking their dogs and stuff at night.
Yeah, it is nice.
I think y'all do a great job on that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joseph.
Oh, yeah, there, there you go.
You're welcome. Councilman Fletcher?
A couple things. One, just want to reiterate, July 4th, our Independence Day celebration will be nine from 11 at the park this year. Last year was at the pool, but this year it'll be at the park. There'll be a, a lot of different attractions there for all ages. So I would encourage everybody to come out for that. It is something definitely well needed in, in our city and, and, and surrounding. I also want to just say thank you to our staff for the phenomenal job that you guys have done through all of the COVID-19. It's, it's, I don't think the average citizen really understands everything that you all do behind the scenes, especially when there's a pandemic or there's something else going on. I know that, you know, in, in my business and in dealing with healthcare and, and elderly in specific, that, you know, there, I spend literally 25 to 30% of my time dealing just with COVID-19 regulations from the state. I can only imagine what it is here in our city. And you guys have done a phenomenal job working from home, as well as here in the city, and making the sacrifices that you've made. I know that it hasn't been an easy time, but I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys do and have done. With that being said, also, obviously, what's going on within our nation and what is, has turned into be something that now is rising against our men in blue, I couldn't be more proud to have RPE serve our community the way that you do. You serve with integrity. You serve with loyalty, honesty, and trust. And I'm, stand 100% behind y'all in what you do each and every day. People don't understand, especially now, the sacrifices that you make every time you put your uniform on and step in a vehicle. And I don't want any of us to take that lightly, especially during these times. And yes, black lives matter. All lives matter. And blue lives matter, too. And it's time that our communities come together as a nation unified with respect for one another and, and serving one another, loving on one another, not looking at somebody's gender, race, sex, nationality, anything else. We still are one nation under God. And, and I just really appreciate everything that you guys do each and every day and know that that is not taken for granted, not just by me, but I know everybody that's sitting at this table, as well as the community that you serve. So thank you all very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Fletcher. Councilman Raymaker?
Couple things, then. The ad campaign, is that, has that kicked off now?
Yes, sir, that, that's gonna launch right away. We're seeing a lot of activity in our restaurants. Believe we have a few that may not have dine-in service just yet, but overall, our restaurants are busy and the people are back.
It was 75%.
Correct. And, and just to add to that, our entertainment venues are opening through the end of the month. Dave and Buster's, Urban Air, AMC, main event. Some this week, some just through the end of the month, so.
As of, as of now, then, the numbers showing for May were, how far are we down?
For April, we're down about 31%.
That's good considering.
Yeah, I thought that it would be a lot higher.
Yeah, I think we all thought it would be a lot higher.
Even the surrounding areas didn't have a huge hit. Conroe Ridge.
That's good.
We were a pretty healthy area.
Then I did want to say thanks to a couple folks, then. I know we did our scholarships, but it would not be possible, if not for generous donations from folks like John Blile and from Kathy Ryer as well. So they helped keep this thing afloat. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts for that. The last thing I wanted to touch on was misleading and deceptive article that was just out in today's Conroe Courier about, about tuition reimbursement and the headline being $70,000. That's over 10 years. This is a budgeted item every year. Every council for 10 years has approved this. So there's no there there, folks. I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, this is just misleading information. And I just can't believe that people actually make a career writing deceptive articles like that. So that is all I have.
Well put. Councilman Raymaker?
Thank you. I really don't have a whole lot, other than to reiterate how excited I am about our Fourth of July celebration, how thankful I am to the Civic Club and the staff.
of July celebration, how thankful I am to the Civic Club and the staff and our council members who served on the Civic Club for putting that together. To echo Councilman Fletcher's statements, you know, y'all know me. I try not to get wrapped up in a whole lot of things, especially when they're outside of what's going on within our city, but I'm very invested in our city and how we treat each other and how we operate as a city. And I think we do a great job. I really do. I mean, and for the most part, you think of all of the, of the, I mean, especially just since I've been fortunate enough to sit up here, some of the crazy events that we've had, whether it's been hurricanes or pandemics or whatever it is, our city always rallies, they always come together, we always weather the storm, no pun intended, and it's been a tough 2020. It has been. There's no question. And I honestly feel like our city needs this now more than ever. And so I'm super excited that we're having it. I can't wait to see all of my neighbors and fellow residents just enjoying each other, and as Ted put it perfectly, our residents, our city staff, our police, our strategic partners, just everybody out there just doing nothing but loving each other and loving being around each other. And if we can't do that, then why are we up here? I mean, what are we doing? You know, that's, that should be the only reason why we're here, is because we're all trying to come together to just provide a better life for our families, our children, for each other. So I'm excited about the Fourth of July. I'm looking forward to it, and thank you again for putting it together. So, okay, with that, we will, we will move into executive session, and we're going to talk about pending litigation with Harold Denton. We're going to talk about real property with Dave Memorial Drive, and we're going to talk about personnel matters, the city administrator's evaluation. We will recess the regular session at 7:52. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good night.